Okay, let's call the meeting, zoning commission meeting of July 15th to order. It's a regular meeting. It is 7:03. I hope our camera is going. We have one absent. I don't see Mike here tonight. So, Kevin, will you serve for Mike again? And that gives us six. Okay, let's move on to the minutes of July 1st. I had some comments. Line 61. "I think we had a brief discussion about the new building." I hate that.[56.12][56.12](laughter) On 116, there's an incomplete sentence. "I recuse myself as a..." Fine, no, 140 is a mistake. Actually, Ms. Mullen appeared in 140. It looked as if she was a commission member. My first thing was, where'd she come from? And I realized it's our zoning enforcement officer. I think you should put her title so that it's not confusing to who made the comment. 174 and 175. Before we voted on the special exception, I think I made the comment that we all agreed that this applicant, an application, has met the standards that are required for a special exception. And we listed them. We went through them. So it wasn't just that they...
I don't know that that falls under this one. This was the floodplain?
Yeah, it's still a special exception.
It's a special exception. You don't think we set it for that one?
Did you guys go through that?
He did.
Yeah, then if it happened, it can be...
We should list it in our minutes that we considered all of the items in the checklist That's all I have. Anybody else got something? Bruce?
Yeah, line 140. It starts with the word "not," and that needs to be deleted.
Not on ours.
Uh-uh.
Could it be a different number?
130. Because it's a double negative.
Oh, yeah. This isn't what was on the website this morning, but I'm not sure how that happens. Anyway, it's fixed.
Is that the 130?
It's a different number, yeah. It was the double or not. Not, not, then.
So remove the "not" from 130.
Right, but you already got that.
Any others? Anybody else? You have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'm of approval as amended.
No second?
Second by Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 6-0. Okay. Next order of business is a public hearing. And Mr. Secretary, could you read the call?
No.[272.58][272.58](laughter)
What are you doing?
I forgot it.
Here.[276.58][276.58](laughter)
I have DRB and not zoning commission. How do I get zoning back?[282.83][282.83](laughter)
Little learning curve.
Oh, the tab at the top.
Yeah, I tried to do that. "Application 1933 of William and Sandra Seelig, owners for special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M dot 7 dot B for construction of, in addition to an existing barn, and construction of a new barn and floodplain on the property located at 40 Riverside Road, assessors map G12, block 107, lot 033, zone R40."
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant want to explain to us what they're planning to do?
I'm looking to put a small addition...
Please, name an address, please, to start.
Bill Seelig, 40 Riverside Road, Simsbury, Connecticut.
Thank you, Bill.
And thank you all for being here in the middle of the summer. I want to put an addition across the back of the existing barn that I have that actually I had approval about 10 or 11 years ago for, but I didn't get it done in time. So I'm back to, I want to finish the project now, so I had to reapply. And the purpose of the addition on the barn is so that I have a place where I can work with my equipment, store things, and that sort of issue. In addition to that, I had originally planned a barn that was further out in the field. I've moved it. It's slightly larger than the one that I applied for 11, 12, 13 years ago. And what I found out while living on the property is that the new barn should be up near the old barn because that's a little bit higher. And from what I've seen from a couple of floods like Katrina on my property is that the other location would have been wet a lot sooner than if it's up closer to the barn. And I think utilities and other things make it more, a better location for it. And that's for additional animals and farm work. So, questions?
How does a siding work? Couldn't quite tell from the diagrams to make it flow through.
You have to install breakaway sections in the bottom so that the pressure of the water flowing through will open it so that you don't have to depend on somebody opening a door or doing any of that type of work. So they are put parallel to the flow of the water, which in this case runs mostly north-south. So that's the direction that these would be installed in. The barn in the front's going to be a pole barn. And it would be pretty easy to do this. I will be, of course, coordinating it with the people, the engineers, and people that will know how to make sure that they're constructed properly. And that's one of the recommendations that are here for accepting this, is that that be inspected so that we can make sure that everything is in accordance with the proper use of the floodplain.
There's a, sorry?
Go ahead, Jac.
There's a new barn and an addition?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure there were different colors and hatchmarks and stuff on what we received.
Yes. And I'm actually hoping eventually to put solar panels on the roof of the new barn.
So the siding on the barn, is it clapboard or barwood? What are you doing for siding? And then how do you do it when they do the flap?
Well, as I say, I'm going to probably be working with an engineer that knows a little bit more about the specifics and builders that are familiar with it. But basically, my understanding is that it has to either be hinged or has to have a way for the pressure of the water to push it out of the way so that it doesn't restrict the flow. So it's all about restriction of flow.
Kevin, maybe to clarify. So the walls are designed actually to fail. So if you go to page two of my staff report, you see a house that's kind of just, just has the frame left of it. These walls are designed basically in a flood event when you have greater than 20 pounds per square inch pushing up against it. So that's the water pushing up against the wall. The wall will basically fail. It'll fold, but your frame that holds the structure up will remain. So that's when they talk about an engineered breakaway wall. It's designed at a certain pressure, and it's based on the exposure of the hazard. In this case, the engineer would look at, what's the amount of water in a 100-year storm event that's going through this property based on the flood insurance rate map? And then you will design it so that, like I said, in that 100-year storm event, the wall will fail and fall, break off from the frame, but it'll still allow that water passes through, which is compliant under the National Flood Insurance Program, excuse me, for a structure such as this that is being used for storage and agricultural purposes.
So do we have a height? Does it go 12 feet? How high is...
It's used about 12 feet. So, I mean, it could be anywhere up, up to 12 feet. This picture here shows about 11 feet. That's in my staff report because it's the first floor, basically. And this is a coast, a residence in the coast that had a breakaway wall on the first floor that in the storm event, with the pressure from the wave action, collapsed and allowed for water to pass through the lower portion of the structure without damaging the frame, et cetera.
Okay.
That's great.
But if you have stalls and whatever inside, doesn't that also impede the flow?
So it would still allow to go through. You would have some obstructions, but the main, what the concern would be in this case would be the shadowing effect from a structure. So you put a structure in the floodplain like this, this size, and you have floodfalls that's coming north to south. It becomes an obstruction, so the water path will go around it. Now you're deflecting it to the, in this case, east or west. Once you're opening it up and opening a path to go through, it limits that shadowing effect and the deflection that potentially occur. The interior with the stalls, et cetera, I mean, we're talking, I don't see that as like a finished space similar to, if it was like living space, because you'd have, you know, fencing that would allow for passage through those things. We're not talking about, it's partitioned off entirely from ground to ceiling.
Because the barn, existing barn doesn't have this.
The good thing about the existing barn, and it doesn't because it was built before these regulations were put into effect, I believe. But the good part about that, well, there's a couple of things. One is, I don't want the building to wash away. I don't want things to happen, and I want to make sure that I'm a good citizen in town relating to doing things in a proper manner to make sure that there isn't any impediment. What I do with the barn now is I have four stalls that are in that same direction, north and south. And I have doors that can close them off if there were a real emergency, but they're always open. These are run-in stalls, so everything is always open in that barn in that direction anyway. And if there were an event like this coming up, I would be moving the horses, and I would not have any reason to close those doors. But the barn that's there, that is, that's how I'm using it right now. And the back new section will have these breakaway walls or breakaway doors. I don't know what's going to be there, but we'll make sure that they meet the requirements, certainly.
Dave, could we get a little break here? I understood we were going to have some tutorial on this thing before we started using it in meetings. I'm stuck. I can't see any drawings or any of this proposal. And I'm in a disadvantage over here now. Everybody else might be fine, but it's not working for me. So I'm not sure what you can do about it, but I need some help over here.
Pass this one down. This one's under running.
So am I correct in assuming now that there is no tutorial? This is it?
This is it.
We're not getting anything printed?
This application is in there.
Took a whole minute to read it.
And we're talking about Mike's recommendation that's there.
Thank you.
So there is a break between the new barn and the old barn, then?
Yes. You all got a drop box?
Yes.
You got it, Bruce?
I've got what you put in front of me, in front of me.
There's also a hard...
Do I get it in terms of the presentation? No. I didn't have the drawings to look at. And I'm not as familiar as others, but I did look at it some this morning, so I'm not totally new to it. Okay.
Okay. The current barn has been there for quite a while. How often has that flooded?
Never. They might, I've lived there for, we've been there for 13 or 14 years now. And we've had several, one flood that came in within an inch or two of being a 100-year flood. And that got within about 15 or 20 feet of the existing barn, but it didn't flood it.
So is it in the floodplain or not?
Yes.
If it's 55 flood, it would have been the last one that would have gotten up that high. Because houses beyond, behind you on Riverside got flooded in that one.
Yeah, well, the 55 flood was, I'd need a breakaway house. It went to the second...
Went to your house.
It went to the second floor in 55. When I first moved in there, one of the firemen that was, in the junior fireman at the time of the 55 flood, came over to help me clean the basement, get water out of the basement. And he said, "See those power lines up there?" He said, "That's where we were in our boat." So if there's an event like that, there really isn't too much that can be done anyway. But the flood that I did see put about, let's see, the rail to the north of my riding area, it was up to the second rail. And on the house side, it was up to the first rail. And it was a good lesson for me to learn how the property gets used. This property also has what's called Bradley Brook, which runs behind the property. And the water can, it's that low point on Riverside Road that's almost up where it connects back with East Wheaton. That low point there that floods first on Riverside Road is Bradley Brook. So the water can flood over the river that way, and it can come in behind in that floodplain over there. So each storm, from my experience, is slightly different in the way that it gets approached or comes through. But the place where I want to put the barn is the highest available spot. And it's not as much in the floodway as the other one was. That's where the water was just shooting through.
That was my next question. Is this in the floodway or is it...
It's just, the southwestern corner pinches into the floodway of this, what do you call, location on the property. So that's why the breakaway walls are required for that. Because otherwise, the other option would be is elevating it. But FEMA does allow storage agricultural buildings in the obstruction-free zone, provided you have some, a similar means of allowing water to pass through. So the breakaway walls are one of the options. It's similar to the VE zone, wave action zone in the coastal setting.
Thank you. Do you guys have questions?
Nope. It sounds like a great plan.
Kevin?
Nice additions?
They might have a baseball field out there. Bruce?
Just, I'm not sure, you know, the question you raise about the cross-section of the Brookway, I don't know if I have all the drawings to look at, but our regulations call for a typical cross-section showing the channel of the stream, elevation of the land, location of the development, and high-water information. Is that in here?
You have a certification from Ed Lally, professional engineer, basically stating that there's no adverse impact to the floodplain with this development. That's in the attachment with the application. He did an assessment of the area, the grades, the fact it's a fairly level area, the fact that the floodplain itself in this area is very broad, the limited development, it should have no impact. It's a blip on the radar for the floodplain in this case.
So that means no, there's no drawing that's called on...
But there's no rise certification from a professional engineer.
And then it says there's a plan of the area within 1,000-foot radius of the proposed development, showing topography, vegetation, et cetera. Is that in here?
You have a site plan for this property.
Does it cover 1,000-foot radius? Site plan is a different item. That's item A.
You have enough drawings as the floodplain administrator to say that it shows that there's no adverse effect to the floodplain and certifications. You have a map of the property and, like I said, this certification.
I'm good.
Okay, we're good.
Well, should we consider waiving those or is some combination of Ed Lally's letter and...
That's for the consideration after the public hearing, I'd say, Bruce.
Okay.
Let's get all the facts out that we're...
All the facts that we're going to have. Thank you.
Anyone in the public care to speak to this application?
An engineer here.
We have a town engineer, a town public works fellow here.
I have a motion to close the public hearing for application 1933.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any more discussions? Closing it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. So the public hearing is closed. Now we can move on. The next order of business is to consider the application for the new barn and the floodplain. And town staff has given us some, on the other page. So Bruce, you feel that we should waive, we should vote to waive the 1,000-foot requirement for a, I don't know what it says. What does the reg say, Bruce?
It says, "Applications for special exception shall be accompanied by the following documents, which shall be prepared by a registered engineer and submitted in triplicate. Item A is a site plan prepared in accordance with Article 5, Section 1. Item B is a typical valley cross-section showing the channel of the stream, elevation of the land, location of development, and high-water information. And item C is a plan of the area within 1,000-foot radius of the proposed development, showing topography, vegetation, and effect of the proposed development upon flooding and drainage within the site and on adjacent properties. And then item D is any other information deemed pertinent by the commission."
Okay. So what do we think? We should waive, vote to waive these requirements and accept what we've been given by professional engineer and my staff?
Would staff recommend that?
I recommend that you make, if you're going to do that, make a finding that you have as kind of what's in my motion, that the commission finds the applicant's demonstrated compliance with regulations related to development within the floodplain and make a comment to the effect of the documentation, the supporting documentation provided, provided sufficient evidence and finding, making that determination. Sorry, I'm rambling.
And the reason...
That way, that way you're at least saying you demonstrated compliance based on the information provided, which is the site plan along with the certification from Ed Lally, the professional engineer, which was exhibit 2.
I think there have been some improvements in the information that we've had submitted to us. And that what we asked for in our regulations from some years ago are a little bit of overkill in the sense that they incur a lot of cost and don't really give you anything that isn't covered already. That's my opinion. Jackie?
I agree.
Kevin?
I think that's fair. No, I would think the opinion of the professional engineer is going to be more valuable than our opinion of, interpretation of seeing the raw data. I think you're better off having an engineer explain it to you.
Who's already been out, in this case, to the property.
Yeah.
Donna?
I would agree with Kevin.
Bruce?
I'm not opposed to accepting the engineer's insight. I think it's valuable. But I think some accounting needs to be made to the fact that there are documents required by our policy that aren't here, and they're not coming, and we don't think they're necessary.
We're going to have a motion to waive them and substitute the engineers.
Yeah, okay. I'm on board with that.
Okay. Can you make a motion?
We said technology was faster.
I think the motion is...
I move to approve application 1933 of William and Sandra Seelig, owners for a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section M dot 7 dot B, for construction of, in addition to an existing barn, and construction of a new barn and floodplain on the property located at 40 Riverside Road. Commission finds that the application has demonstrated compliance with the regulation relating to development within the floodplain.
And that we specifically waived the requirement for site plan?
Yeah, okay. We waived the requirements for the floodplain in lieu of the report by engineer Lally.
He said there's a valley cross-section and 1,000-foot plan. There's three elements that we're waiving.
Oh, three elements? Okay, okay. The three elements are waived.
But the site plan is here.
In view of the fact that the professional engineer has written an opinion.
Or it covers it, addresses it. Approval of the special exception is subject to the following condition. Administrative zoning compliance review is required for work within the floodplain. A pre-construction meeting is required with the zoning enforcement officer and floodplain administrator prior to commencement of work. Final, as-built is plan for issuance of certificate of occupancy completion for the addition and new barn. As-built drawings is to illustrate horizontal and vertical location for the structure along with site grading in order to certify compliance with this approval. The applicant is to provide the floodplain manager with certification from professional engineer. Their breakaway walls were constructed and installed in accordance with Section 60.3EF of the National Flood Insurance Prior Flood, is that a reg? Reg. Prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy slash completion. Changes to location, elevation, and/or other site improvements associated with additions or barn construction require approval from the zoning commission.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 6-0. Thank you, Bill.
I just can't read the writing on these things.
Move back to paper.
Who's this other guy?
The next order of business is the application of...
1934.
1934. Tom Roy, Director of Public Works, Town of Simsbury. So you're going to explain to us, please?
Oh, okay. We're just receiving it? It's not a hearing?
Yes. There's no public hearing. It's a site plan amendment. I think they're building something.
I think so.
We're always building something, but this time, we're building something at our public works facility on Town Forest Road. We're doing an addition to the existing building out there. It's about an addition of a little over 2,000 square feet in terms of footprint, none of which is going to be visible from the road. It's the addition of some additional bay for parking of our heavy equipment and an expansion of our office area.
Is everyone able to get to it?
No.
No, we're not sure where we're at here.
I got it.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. Town Forest.
We got stuck in a loop here. Trying to get out of Bill's ceilings.
So it's an addition to the back of what we currently have?
That's exactly right.
And that's why you're saying it's not gonna be visible from the road?
Correct.
Because it's just the little proposed addition and, proposed addition. The offices are currently back there?
The building was built backward. I don't know what to tell you. Yeah, that's actually where, where the offices are, and so the one architectural improvement, we're gonna put some little level of an entrance so that hopefully when people are driving around, they can find us a little easier. But for whatever reason, when it was constructed, I think the, the view back then was it was a highway garage. Things were very different, and it evolved since the first structures were built, were built out on site there. But we're trying to make it a little bit more of a professional setup, allow us to actually take in residents and have a place for them to understand where they're going, that type of thing, and.
So residents actually come to that building?
They do, they do.
Yeah, no, I would not think to even drive around the back of the building.
Yeah, and, and as part of this, I'm sure we're gonna be hopefully updating our signage and a few other things.
Like, why do residents come there?
Usually to tell us we're doing a great job. Sometimes in the winter, they want to express a level of concern.
So we can take the sites down in the winter. My mailbox.
Purposely.
No, we, we actually try to be as open as we can to the public and having, right now, the way, the way the setup is just not functional for us. The other thing that's changed over time is our crew leaders and our other staff that used to essentially work out of their pickup trucks now need desks and offices, and mechanics need computers. And so it's, it's really just kind of modernizing the facility.
Anybody have any more questions, Kevin?
Seems pretty clear cut.
How much additional space is that?
The footprint's gonna be 2,200 square feet of additional space, but it's gonna be two levels. And then there's some reconfiguration going on.
1,100 on each level?
Uh, no, 2,200 is gonna be the footprint expansion, so 4,400 total.
What's the rest of the building? Did you already say that?
It's, I tell you, it's not gonna make Architectural Digest, but it's a combination of offices. It's where all of our mechanics work for all.
That's what the footprint is in the rest of the building?
Oh, the footprint, I don't know that off the top of my head.
So there's a couple of additions. There's the two in the back, and there's one on the right-hand corner? Is that where it's darker? I can't tell what it says in the, and you can't either because it's gone now, right there. Oh. Right here, this little corner.
That's just captured. That's a storage container. We just wanted to make sure we added everything on the site.
All right, it looks like it was an addition because it was in the same darkness as the.
Yeah.
Any more comments? Questions?
I have just a comment for the record. At my house, we think the Department of Public Works does a great job in the wintertime. About two years ago, I think three years ago, maybe in the winter, my wife took cookies down to the guy's restaurant that afternoon.
Wait, now he's gonna tell you he drove around, he couldn't find it.
That is very nice.
Okay, so you got cookies and sent them in approval. All right, you have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve application 1934 of Thomas J. Roy, P.E., Director of Public Works, agent, Town of Simsbury owner, for an addition to the existing Department of Public Works Vehicle Maintenance and Offices Building at 66 Town Forest Road, West Simsbury. The site plan amendment is subject to the following conditions of approval. One, an administrative zoning permit is required for the addition. And two, a pre-construction meeting is required with the zoning enforcement officer prior to start of construction activities.
I'll second.
Any more comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carrie, six, nothing. Thank you. We have, we need a motion to add the appointment of a new person to the DRB to the agenda. Can we have a motion to add that?
Sure, make a motion to add.
To add the DRB appointment to the agenda?
Add him to the agenda, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Seconded by Kevin. Past six, nothing. The.
Now we're gonna do the vote.
Yes, the person is Polly Rice, is being recommended for the position by the Republic Town Committee. And so we hear a motion to do that?
To accept Polly Rice?
All right, I would move to appoint Polly Rice to the Design Review Board.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jackie. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Six, nothing. It's Carrie. Polly Rice is approved as a new DRB member.
Great.
We don't, we don't need to state the length of her term, right?
Yes, she's filled a vacancy.
All right, do they all expire at the end of this year?
I have to look at the vacancies, I mean, the terms. But yeah, they were like two years, and I think there's a few people who are expiring in December.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't know what the. We used to expire with the selectmen.
Yes.
Change over, but I don't know if we now stagger them, or does the whole board retire at once?
It's staggered, but I can check and email the board tomorrow.
I think we staggered them.
I thought, I think so, too.
When we, when we set it up.
Well, it makes sense, but I vaguely remember that, that's why I asked.
It was Ed and Rob Palmeroy and I that Matt did the proposal, and I think that was it.
So as long as we're on that, where, where is the charge to committee? Is that written somewhere?
The DRB?
Yeah.
It's in the charter.
It's in the charter, okay.
They're proposed, they're supposed to examine the conformance of proposed buildings to the design guidelines that have been approved for non-residential purposes, non-residential properties. That's a decent paraphrase of it. Okay, we took care of that. I think we're at the point where, is there any correspondence that we need to discuss that before we move to the workshop? Anybody else? Okay, it's time to turn off the TV. Good night, people.